Gloria Gonzalez de Lequea.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Trish Bodie. Shadé Fashekoun.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
Here.
Paul Gautier.
My apologies, this is all different. It is, what time is it? Oh my goodness. It is 4:06 and we have a quorum and this meeting is called to order.
So good evening, everybody. We are excited this evening to have Esperanza Orozco with us from Tasby to help us with our team of eight training. And so I'm going to turn it over to Esperanza.
Okay, wonderful. Hi, my name is Esperanza Orozco. I'm a Tasby Board Consultant. I am also a sitting board member, serving my third term, serving as President, Vice President, and Secretary. I also am still a certified bilingual teacher. Taught for 11 years, also Union President for seven years as well. So I come to you with some experience and with a different lens, right? So today, we're going to work on our team building and we're going to start off with the item you are supposed to bring. You are supposed to bring an item that represents who you are. And before we get started, I just want to give a quick overview of what is going to happen tonight. We have our introductions with artifacts, so you're going to say your name, how long you've been on the board, and you are going to share that artifact that represents you. We will move on into our social contract. We will take a break if needed and then move on to our board self-assessment. Okay, so who would like to share out first? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, she said no, okay. Not it. I brought a book. It's House on Mango Street by Sandra Cisneros and it was the first book that a teacher gave to me that was written by somebody that sounded like me and really meant a lot to me and I feel like changed my life. This copy was signed by Sandra and it says Felicidades for trailblazing the less traveled camino adelante. So, you know, it was a big deal for me to sit and talk with her and tell her how this book changed my life and I often, y'all know, this is the gift that I give people because I think it's such a part of me and my story. Thank you, she's a wonderful author. I'm from San Antonio, so I know her very well. Oh, we'll have to chat. We'll have to chat. Great book. Tell us, how many years have you been on the board?
My apologies, I've been on the board five years.
Okay, wonderful. Who's next?
I'll go, okay. She stared at me across. Christine Mauer, so I got elected in November of 2020, so Anna and I ran together during COVID, which was a very interesting time to run for an office. So the thing I selected is this tiny little pin and it's the rainbow pin, but it also has the transgender colors on it too. It's a very important thing to me because it was the pin I wore when I got sworn in and it was a very understated way to show that I'm an ally and somebody who really cares about the LGBTQIA community. It's very personal to me and so I'm part of the Free Mom Hugs Movement and so that's a really big deal for me and so this one is just all about me.
Thank you. Who's next? We'll just go down the line?
Can I go next?
Yes.
Of course.
So I wear mine all the time and carry them with me, so there's really three things that are on me 100% of the time, so of course my wedding ring, so we celebrated our 26th anniversary yesterday. This is my family crest and so it's actually a negative image of our family crest and it was used to seal letters, so they're hot wax and then they sealed the letter with the hot wax so that they knew who it was from. And so all the men in our family have one and then as our boys are turning 21, I make one for them and that's their 21st birthday gift and so all the men in our family have one. And then of course, my faith and this medallion has Alvin's name on one side and my name on the other and they're both almost rubbed off because I wear it all the time.
Thank you, that's very nice. Who is next? We are, Trish, since you came on board here, we are sharing something, an item that we brought to share who we are, right? And talk about how many years you have been on the board.
So I got, I'm not on the board luckily. Both for me and for them. No, I got here in 2019, September.
Okay.
I wanted to bring my dog, but y'all said no. This one was hard because I have a lot of things that I have kept with me that mean things, but I think like thinking about my position as a school board member and where I'm at, told you I'm going to cry. So Colin's grandma would always send us articles when Steven was first featured in the Houston Chronicle, but it was this article in particular, God, I told you I was going to cry. It was just after a board meeting I yelled at y'all and it was, I think I finally realized that if I wanted to have more of an impact and have my voice heard, I needed to do things more locally and I didn't need to fight. I needed to be mean and angry, I needed to figure out how to beat the system. Told you I would cry. And so, you know, I think about parents who come here frustrated and, you know, mad at us, even yelling at me, and I think about me being that same parent up there, yelling at these two. And when I'm a trustee, I have to, I sometimes have to take that hat off as a trustee and remember that these parents were just like me, frustrated and trying to find their voice and just want to be heard. And so the original story that came out in 2016, I actually have it framed in my closet. So when we have those hard board meetings, I remember my why, why I'm here, why I do what I do, but most importantly, the impact that I've had being that mama bear parent and just remembering how I felt back then and how I feel now. So that's my story.
It's okay, it's good to cry sometimes and let that out because you're right, we are responsible for the most precious folks out there, right? Somebody's child. And at the end of the day, when we do get yelled at at board meetings or people are like, why did you do this or, you know, and get those angry emails, we have to remember and take that with a grain of salt because it is, at the end of that, somebody is scared and they love their child and want the best for their child. And so at the end of the day, that's what it's about. It's about acting out of fear and love at the same time, right? And you're right, y'all came on during the pandemic, so that was a time to experience a lot of turmoil in our communities. So it's okay to cry. Now you had a second item that you wanted to share as well. Now, you brought this, so please share.
I got this in 2020 when we ran, because Max would go with me everywhere, he was like my support dog. And it was funny because I was walking down the street one day and they didn't recognize me, but they recognized Max. And that next day, I saw that individual in the neighborhood and she was like, here, here's your support dog. So he's been my little support dog since I've been on the board. So I really brought it as a joke though, to be honest.
But that is super sweet and significant, right? I mean, that campaign trail, that's some hard stuff. Election time, so that's wonderful to share that story. I will tell you a side note, if I start coughing and coughing, I apologize, I'm allergic to my dog that I just got and I'm taking allergy shots for that, so I really am just full of allergies, nothing else. But please bear with me, so I'm glad there's another dog lover here. Yes. Who's next to share with us?
All right, I'll go next. I'm probably the other one that's going to cry. I also wear mine all the time. I got this necklace with the first of my son's initials, the day that I graduated with my bachelor's degree, because my son was five and he got to watch me do that. And that was amazing. It was by far one of my best days. And then I had my other son's initial added when he was born and he and I had quite an experience. And then the last thing on here, it's called a cornicello. It's a symbol in the Italian culture for luck and protection and prosperity. And I haven't taken this off in almost 11 years. I wear it every day because it reminds me where I come from and where I still have to go and all of the things that I've done to get me here and all of the things that my kids are watching me do to get me here every single day. So that's mine.
Thank you.
I'll go next. So when I moved here in 2014, I had decided that I was going to do something very different from life in Seattle that was very busy and just go, 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 and I just didn't have any time for myself. And after moving here in 2014, about a year later, it just dawned on me, I used to go for walks and then I started running. And so I picked that up some more, started going to local races and so anyway, what I brought is... It's them. So I brought a few of my running medals and I really, it's just something that even though I took a break, I just had to come back to it because it just keeps me going. And so I have eight, because I thought about everybody, well, I brought eight. No, I have more than eight, I have a son at home, but I brought eight. And so your last name is German, so you can wear my Berlin Marathon for the day.
Because you know what, I'm only running if somebody's chasing me.
You like wine? Who likes wine? There's a wine stopper from one of my Zuma Wine Country Challenge that you can wear today. And then San Antonio Marathon. And let's see, well, this was hot chocolate, who likes chocolates? Hot chocolate Atlanta. Well, no, no, I had one, I had one for you. Well, who wants, there's, well, her son goes to school in Dallas, so you can have the Dallas Half Marathon. But I also thought, well, you like bling, so I see you're in love with bling. This is my New York City Marathon and that's the most...
She's from New York.
And you're from New York, yeah, so. And then Austin, 3:00 AM Half Marathon. Oh, who, this is Austin. Well, oh, we're complete, okay.
Yeah, we are.
We are, okay. And then I'm in the...
You want chocolate?
Okay, I'll, I don't... Okay, so, and then there is a group of Nigerian runners and every year when we hit 1,000 miles, we get a medal, so I brought my Nigerian medal from a few years ago. That's mine.
That's fun.
Those are beautiful and what an accomplishment. Might be real gold. Thank you for sharing. Who's next?
So as I was going through the house, I thought, well, will I have the capacity or bandwidth to share? And so many different stories, but I chose this one because, one, I don't drink coffee, I drink hot tea. And hot chocolate. But yeah, so I, we go to Colorado in the summer every year, sometimes even when a board meeting is on, so I'll go up there and y'all see me do the board meeting remote. And this kind of symbolizes to me my work-life balance because I do love working and doing a good job and I would just be like the little energy jester bunny that could, but sometimes you can't, you need to take time. And so when I'm in Colorado and I have my cup, I'll make sure I take pictures of my mug in different spots in Colorado, like sitting on the patio or sitting by the fireplace to remind me and to tell my sister, yes, I'm chilling, I am calm and taking some time for myself, so.
Thank you, and I didn't ask you how many years on the board?
I've been on the board for two years.
Two years?
Since 2015.
2015?
Almost one year.
Nice, so are you the newest?
Yes.
Very nice. You know, as board members, we never really take time to just take a moment and just talk about ourselves and why we're here and what is our why. We're so busy with our agendas, we've got to get it done, we are going to have a meeting that lasts until, luckily, we only go up to 10:30. But, you know, meetings can run long and we can get caught up in all of that. And so that's why we do this activity, just to take a moment to just kind of reflect on who we are as a person, what brings us joy, what is our why? And that really does help understand the dynamics of the team and what you stand for, right? So thank you for bringing that and sharing. I know when I do this activity, we get tears all the time because you don't take time to really think about it and just being in that moment and being vulnerable says a lot about you and your team, right? So thank you for sharing that. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, our social contract. Now I know you have done a social contract before and I have it up here of what was written before. And a social contract is so important and we're going to talk a little bit about it. This is in your Board Operating Procedures, pages two and three, so I just wanted to kind of put it up there because I know that you have done this. Well, let's talk a little bit about why a social contract is needed, right? Let's just go back and reflect on that. Now, most boards have our teams of eight, most. You know, we do have a couple of districts that have five, we have a couple that have nine, we have one that has 24 board members on it. I cannot even imagine, I cannot even imagine all those personalities and sorry, I'm a teacher, so I walk like crazy, I never sit and I never stand still, but all these different personalities that need to work together can be challenging at times, right? Even if they're your best friend, doesn't mean you're going to agree on everything. And sometimes we just have to take another moment, right? Because if we're all arrows going all over the place and we are not going in the same direction to that same end goal, then what does that create? When everybody has their own agenda, you are full of chaos, right? And we know that school boards can hinder student learning, so research shows that school boards can hinder that student learning. And why did we run for the school board? To make things better, because we care about kids, we want the best for kids, we want student achievement for all, but our behavior can sometimes hurt our students. So even though you might be a high-functioning... So even though you might be a high-functioning board and a high-functioning district, it's always good just to take that moment and not be complacent, but always be reflective of what you're doing, what you stand for, and that accountability to yourselves and to each other. So, we know that board behavior can cause some issues. So, a social contract really is going to be very crucial to setting a foundation of trust. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that in just a moment. But board behavior causes board member turnover, right? When you have bad board behavior, that causes some turnover in your board. Now, when you have a lot of bad board behavior, and you're having that turnover left and right, it causes superintendent turnover. Because who wants to work with a team of seven fighting folks, right? That's very difficult to get your job done. When you cannot concentrate on that end goal, because you're dealing with lots of very... And shall I say, some, maybe some aggressive behavior on a board? Now, when you have that superintendent turnover, what happens? You have policy, goals, and personnel change. Now, that's creating destabilizing... That is really hurting your district when you're having those changes. If you're changing policy, your philosophy is changing, because there's all this constant turnover and turmoil, then that's when you see that your student achievement declines. So that's why we talk about the social contract and using it to help us set that foundation of trust. Because with behavior that is not benefiting our students, when you have a board that's not working cohesively, you get these things. You start getting, you start seeing that high turnover. You start seeing that low morale. You start seeing some mediocre results. You see the scapegoating, you see retaliation, you need improvements. Because it really does trickle from the top down. And I know, I worked in a district where we had a very dysfunctional board. And that dysfunctional board, and those arrows going everywhere, what it led to was us having three IR campuses. It led to low-performing campuses, where TEA was going to take over one, since we were already in year, going to year three of Needed Improvement Campus. So, we were not focused on that end goal. Instead, it was all those people going in different directions, not working towards that end goal together. And this is what it caused, a turnover rate of 18-plus percent. And when you do work together, the staff knows it, the students knows it, know it. It trickles down in your policy, in your initiatives, in how you're performing as a district as well. So sometimes, you can perform and be high-performing in spite of, but eventually, things do catch up. So, just remembering our role and what we're about. The Board of Trustees is a governing body for Texas Public Schools. That is 5.5 million children that rely on us to do our job and do it well. We are, to effectively meet those challenges of public education, school boards and superintendents must function together as a governance leadership team. And that's the key word, right? Together. And I always have to pause in this part and just clarify for folks, because I get this question all the time in all my sessions. "Well, what does that mean? Does that mean we all have to vote the same? Does it have to be a 7-0 vote? What, we can't disagree?" Absolutely not. That is not what it means. It means that you work cohesively together, you take a vote, the vote is what it is, and then you respect the body corporate and the decision made by the body. That's what it means. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna share a story with you of an incident that occurred. I remember this one time, we had an agenda item that was voting for a $5 million pool, right, to be built. This was way back, so pools were 5 million. Now, they're like 50 million. But... It was huge. 5 million was huge back then, right? Okay, so, $5 million pool. And I was totally opposed to it, because we said, "We don't have money to give employees an increase." So we have money in general fund to go to a $5 million pool, but we're not going to give a salary increase to our employees, right? So I had an issue with that. I had been union president, so employees and salary increases were very important to me. So, we voted against it, okay? It was a 4-3 vote, split. Well, guess what's on the agenda the next month? The pool is up on the agenda again, because board operating procedures is one thing, and while board operating procedures might say you respect the body corporate, legally, you can put it on the agenda. So it got on the agenda again the second time. Split vote, it failed again, 4-3. Is this good for the team? What is it creating with the board and the team of eight? It's creating division, right? This keeps coming up, and the body corporate is not being respected. So, a month, a month later, it gets on the agenda again for the third time. So it's a, it's a big show, lots of people, all that kind of stuff, right? It gets on the agenda. This time, it passes the other way, right? It passes, and so, it was really heated. Everybody was passionate, and employees were like, "What is happening?", right? And they had spoken at public forum as well, "You're thinking and considering this $5 million, but you can't give us..." you know, so on. So it was very heated. So, it, it passed. So afterwards, the media came and talked to me, because I was, I voted against it. And they said, "Well, you voted against it, what are you gonna do? It passed. Are you gonna try to put it back on the agenda, you know, get a prevailing side to put it?", you know, all this stuff. And I said, "Absolutely not, because what is happening? It is creating division over and over and over, and I'm going to respect the body corporate and move on." Because I could have, and I could have, and all the could-haves, but it wasn't about being on the winning side. It wasn't about that anymore. It was about, we wanted to fund our employees' salary increases. We couldn't do it, this happened, and I just had to accept it and move on, because I knew it would do more harm if I continued on and on and on with that agenda item, right? So sometimes, it's important to think about what's gonna benefit the whole, and what's gonna be, again, because it's not just about the board. It is about, okay, those dynamics on the board, how's it gonna impact our students? How's it gonna impact our staff? Because they're witnessing our behavior, they're, they might see it on TV. They might be there in the audience. They might hear it from a neighbor at the HEB, "Oh my God, did you see that board meeting?" "Oh, and she said no, and you know, they were fighting", you know, all of that stuff, right? So it's so important that we try to work together. You can have your dissenting votes. You can vote no, but just at the end of the day, coming back together and respecting the body corporate is what is key to helping your team of eight work and be high-functioning. Now, what is a social contract? Y'all discussed this previously, but I'm gonna review it again. So, a social contract really does help build trust. It helps set that foundation for good governance. Now, a social contract is from Capturing Kids' Hearts, which is a socio-emotional learning program, right? However, it is so applicable to what we do as a board, what we do as a team, how we work, and having those conversations. So, for our district, I know when we got, when we had a change in superintendents, we had this amazing superintendent come in, and he's like, "You know what? You all are dysfunctional, you all are not on the same page." And when we were out hiring for a superintendent, you know, we were told by our search firm, "Good luck finding a superintendent that wants to work with you all. We'll do our best, but no guarantees", right? But, he came anyway, fantastic, and he said, "Let's do something different", right, because I see that there is no trust here at the foundation of this team. We need to work together. If we wanna get those three campuses out of IR, we wanna turn our district around and be a high-performing district, then we need to do something different. So, we said, "Okay, everybody put their egos aside", and said, "You know what? Let's try something different, because this is not working. Clearly, it's not working with these failing campuses. It is not working for our students." So, we did a social contract, and it was very interesting, the dialogue that came out of that. But it has, it did help us tremendously, and it has helped many a boards who actually use it, because it's one thing to discuss it and dialogue, but it's another thing to really implement it and breathe it in your board meetings. So how can a social contract help your team? We talk about expectations. Again, we don't often talk to each other about our behavior, our expectations of each other, because we are busy with our agendas, we are busy with the work of the district. But actually, having a conversation about what our expectations are of ourselves and of each other is so important to articulate. I always tell, I always tell my superintendent this, and, and my children, "Don't assume anything. You cannot assume that she knows exactly how you wanna be treated. You cannot assume that she can read your mind. You cannot assume that. You really have to articulate what the expectations are." There's also that responsibility. Once you do articulate these expectations, there is that responsibility that's on your shoulders. "Okay, well, this is what I, I voted on. This is what I said represents us." So that's why it's so important to review at least annually, as your team dynamics change, to make sure you're all on the same page. And having that accountability piece, making sure that you are holding each other accountable and you're holding yourself accountable. And you know what? The community also holds you accountable. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that in just a sec. Okay. So before we get to that question, I'm gonna share another story with you about accountability. So, we created this social contract, we had lots of dialogue. It was like a three-hour discussion, because it was the first time we were doing the social contract. So we had three hours of intense discussion, and "What does that mean?", and "Why are you saying that?", and, you know... Very robust discussion that we had. Then we finally came up with our social contract at the end of that. Years, every year, we do it. We've been doing it for about five years now. We do it, we post it on our website. We share it and read it at every board meeting. We have it everywhere, because it is a reminder to all of us, right? So accountability is so important, because actually, we actually had community members that said, "I saw that board meeting last night, and so-and-so was not following the social contract. I saw on social media that a board member was violating the social contract." And so the community held us accountable. And we are accountable to our community. And students even had the chance, we have a student advisory panel, that also weighed in on some of that and what it means, and "What do you mean by that?" Because I didn't see it when I was there, you know? So it's very interesting, that accountability piece. People aren't going to hold your feet to the fire and say, "Hey, you all agreed to this." I know later on, years later, I, in a district, I had a board member that would violate the social contract, right? And finally, you know, it was said from another board member, "Hey, if you're not gonna follow it, vote no. Vote no on this social contract, because it's an action item that you vote. Vote no." So you can let the community and us know that you're not part of the team, and you don't wanna be part of the team. Yes, ma'am.
So what do you do when that happens? Because you're technically a team of eight, but if you have an individual unwilling to sign the social contract, what do you do?
Well, we're gonna talk about that, because I'm gonna give you some more examples, because... Yes, we have had all kinds of opportunities to experience things like that, right? Yes. And so, they told him, "Just vote no. You are showing a clear message that you're not part of the team." So then, at the end of that, that person voted yes and said, "I will accept it, and I will do it, and I will follow it." And it was very interesting, but that was after years of throwing little violations here and there, because they were finally called out by the community and by another board member saying, "Enough is enough. I mean, don't vote yes on something that you don't value and that you're not part of", right? So, we'll talk a little bit more about some more examples on what you do afterwards. But now, we are going to get into some of the questions to, that we're going to talk about, that we're going to have conversation about, like, "How do you want to be treated by the leader?" I put post-its on your table for you to think about it and reflect, and think about how you want to be treated by the leader. Now, most of you had this opportunity to do this before, and so you're kind of familiar with it. So think about, "How do you want to be treated by the leader?", and the leader is the president, right? That, you are a team of eight, and the leader is the president. Now, remember, presidents change. So think about how you want to be treated by the leader. So I'm gonna give you a couple of minutes to reflect on it. And I will tell you right now, if you say "respected" or "respectful", I'm gonna tell you, dive deeper. Don't just put, "I want to be respected." What does that sound like? What does that look like? It's not enough just to put "with respect". Okay, we'll give you a couple of minutes to do that. Okay, we'll give you a couple of minutes to do that. And when you're done, put your pens down so that I know that you're ready. You can put multiple items on one, that'll be fine. And usually, people pick one or two things that they want to focus on. And after everybody's done, we're going to have time to share out. We will share out. So, just show me you're ready when you have your pens and pencils down and then we'll get started. Okay, so again, the question is, "How do you want to be treated by the leader?" Who would like to share first?
Freated with accountability. If there are things that, that I am not doing that I should be doing, if there are processes that I'm not following that I should be following, I expect to have that conversation. I expect, you know, not to have background information. I work much better with someone who will just have a straight-up conversation and make sure that I am doing my part. And if I'm not, then that person is okay telling me that I'm not.
Okay, and I'm going to take your paper. And you see why it is so important to hear what people want? Because not everybody wants to be treated with, you know, with soft approach and "I need to compliment" and so on. Some people just want you to be blunt. So, it's really important to articulate what your expectation is. So, with accountability, okay, who's next?
I'll go, but, um, to clarify, I thought about this because I was president and you're a president. We're going to have another president. So, I thought about like, what lessons I've learned and, and things that I've thought about. So, three things and one's just a restatement. One is to be included in the vision and feel like you're a part of, because a leader has a vision. Um, the other one is to be seen in a way that your story, your issue, your question, your concern, whatever it is, but to be seen in such a way that they want to know more and want to understand that. So, to be seen. Um, and I also call it active listening and mean it.
I have four.
Yay!
Shocking. Uh, give me grace to talk it out because there's times when I just need to talk to someone and it sounds like I'm angry and my voice is all over the place, but I just need to talk it out and just have that sounding board. So, there's times when I've called him and he's like, "What, what is going on?" Like, "I just need to talk, I just need to talk." And so, give me grace to talk it out. Um, I want to feel like my voice matters. So, when I'm trying to talk it out, like, understand, like, I'm just trying to understand and I'm coming from a good place. Uh, let me be me. Those who know me, I am intense, I am fun, I am extra. And it's a lot to deal with, but just let me be me because I promise I'll get there. My time matters, we're all busy. I just want to feel like my time matters when I'm here at the board meeting. And so, I appreciate, you know, being prepared for board meetings, going, you know, running a very smooth board meeting because we don't want to be here till, you know, 2:00 in the morning. And my favorite thing, which I can't believe I'm going to say this, but call me out with grace because I know I'm not always right. And I think that's what I love about our superintendent is he will call me out and has no problem doing it, but he knows how to do it in a way that helps me become a better leader. So, that's, yeah. Even Gloria too. Gloria has no problem calling me out.
But it's all about the approach that they take with you, knowing your personality and knowing what approach works best for you.
Sometimes graceful. But that's, but you know what though? It took trust and relationship building to get to the point with these two that I can, they understand when I'm calling them, I'm coming from a good place. I'm not trying to cause ruckus. I'm just, I'm being Anna, so.
So, um, I want to be listened to in order to be understood because that's different than just being heard, right? And I want to be allowed to contribute ideas and thoughts.
Yes, and not just hearing you ready to answer and getting a reply back. Now, Anna, you remind me of another story that I have. Um, on that pool vote, right? One of my best friends was on the board with me, is on the board with me. And, um, she voted against it, against it. And she was the vote that changed to vote yes on it. So, being, being that bigger person and knowing that our friendship is not about how we vote, right? As soon as that vote was done and I respected the body corporate, we went out for drinks, you know, and that was it. Now, we always joke about it to this day and that was like five years ago. We still joke to this day. And, you know, I always joke and tell her, "Oh, you know, you did that," or whatever. Um, so, we have a little inside joke about that, but we have to leave it there. You leave it at, leave it at the boardroom. You know, you can't take it personally. And sometimes it's hard. Sometimes it's really hard to do because there has been other times where we have taken it personally and because you might be in a different place, you know? So, it's good to articulate what you need from others.
I just had one point regarding-
Yes.
-when you talked about the flipping of the vote. And did she have a chance to explain herself? Or did everybody have a chance to explain their position as to why? Because sometimes just hearing somebody else's, um, reason can make sense.
Yes, we, we had a very robust discussion in public and privately too, you know? And it's okay, people can change their mind, right? And you just cannot, and again, I didn't take it personally. I'm like, "Okay, that's your vote, that's it, okay. We're done with the meeting. Let's go out for drinks like we always do," right? So.
I've trusted that, um, when we, even when we don't see eye-to-eye, like, both of us have the best and, like, we have the best intent. We all want what's best for the school district. Um, and I think we have the same goal. We may have a different path to get to that goal, but to trust that, um, that, that I want, I want that same thing that, that the president wants, right? That we all, uh, want that same thing. And then the second thing, much like Bruce mentioned, I said, "Listen to." Not simply hearing noise coming out of me, but stop and listen. And, you know, it's what I tell my kids when they're like, when I'm speaking and they already have their response. And they're like, you know, chomping at the bit to say their response. It's like, stop trying to speak and stop thinking about your response. Like, just, you know, listen for a little bit. Let's listen. And so, I think just being able to listen to one another.
And that's very difficult, right? It's kind of human nature to be ready to want to respond to something and you're always thinking. And it's ver, it's something that you have to really be intentional about and learn how to listen and not just to respond or to be ready, but really listen to what, what is that board member saying? You know, and I know I had to train myself to do that because I wasn't doing that when we were way dysfunctional. I was just like, "Oh, I, I'm going to respond to that and I'm going to say this and I'm going to say that. I'm already thinking it in my head and writing my little notes." And I was listening, fully listening, whether it was the right thing that they were saying or not. I should have been more open to listening if I expect that too, right?
Okay. Um, I said safe spaces if and when things get hard because sometimes there are difficult conversations we have to have. And I think that us having that safe space together as a team of eight, um, you know, whether we're in public, enclosed, whatever, like, that, that we can have tough conversations and still know that we, like, that you said, the, the best of intent. You know, we're, we're going at it from the intent of serving this community and serving the teachers and the staff and the, and all of the students. Um, but having that safe space. And then, the next thing is, um, being valued to have a different opinion. Sometimes we are going to have different opinions. And I think that we can still recognize each other's humanity and realize that, you know, we still need to be valued as human beings even though we might see things a little differently. Um, and that quietness is okay. Um, I tend to only speak up when it's really, really important to me. Um, I don't feel like we have to have all the words all the time. I think sometimes quiet is okay.
Quiet is okay.
I had something similar in that last point, which is, um, because I'm also, I also am quiet. Am I not quiet? Yes, I am. So, um, it's basically about understanding my style and I can help with that. Um, but there are times when it might be helpful to elicit that comment because I'm off in my quiet world and might need to speak.
Definitely. And that's something that during Board Officers Academy that I train our board presidents on, is making sure that you make that eye contact, that you give a little nod just in case they just need a little something to say, "Hey, I see you, I hear you and I know you're usually shy and quiet and an introvert, but I know you want to say something," you know? And I value everything that everybody's going to share out. I might not agree with you, you know? And it's okay not to agree. I love that you said the safe place, right? You talked about safe place. Um, I remember a couple of months ago, we were voting on our bond, how we were going to lay out our bond, right? With our different propositions. And I knew that I was in a safe place where I could say, "I'm going to vote no on this bond breakdown" because I didn't like how something was added or whatever. And I didn't have the information, whatever. But I felt safe enough with my team to vote no and not worry what they were going to think. Like, "What, are you crazy? You're voting no on putting this bond together?" And, you know, I had to say and articulate, "Um, I'm going to vote no on this because of this last-minute ad and this is why XYZ. However, I'm, I support the whole bond. I respect, you know, everybody's vote and I would vote for it otherwise. And I'm going to go out, I know it's going to pass, it's going to go and I will go support the bond as soon as it happens," right? But I need to vote no. And being in that safe place where you're not worried about, "Oh, is she going to talk to me afterwards? Oh, is he going to be upset with me?" You know, knowing that you are truly are safe enough to express yourself. Yes, ma'am.
Part of that because I don't know if right now we, as a board, feel like we have safe spaces.
Sure.
And as a president, I don't know how to, how to do that, how to get that. But because, you know, we go into closed and that's where you, you have certain conversations. But most board members have told me that they don't feel safe in there and they don't feel comfortable having those conversations in there. And I don't know how to create that space given the situation. That, that is what, it is what it is. And I hate that I can't cre, I can't, I can't tell them that it is a safe space.
Sure. And I think, um, it depends on the dynamics of your team. Because I've been there where it was totally an unsafe place to voice anything in close session. However, as a board member, I said, "You know what? I, you know, I know all these people, it's toxic, all this stuff. However, I'm going to say what I need to say." And I said what I needed to say and things would leak out and all that kind of stuff. So, I knew that, but you have to find that balance, right? Of what do I need to say right now? Because sometimes quiet is like you're agreeing sometimes. Might take it that way, right? Because you have to have those conversations about, "Hey, I'm just quiet. Um, doesn't mean I agree or disagree, this is just me." So, having those conversations, uh, able to help that, uh, move that team along. But sometimes you do pull back. And I have been on different teams where we needed, where we knew, "Oh, we have this board member that we might not fully trust um, because things will leak out." Or maybe we don't have the same comfortable feeling that we did, right? Um, I know when I had a board that I was on and it was all of us, "Hi, how are you?" Um, when we had a, a board that I was on, "Hi, Esperanza Rosco."
Welcome to the Academy.
Hi, nice to meet you. We talked a little bit about those team dynamics, right? And making sure that we were able to work together, um, at that. Okay, so, we're on the first question. Let me catch you up here. You all have done social contract before and it's in your board operating procedures. And so, we are revisiting our social contract.
That's fantastic. And you know what'd be really good, fantastic? If our board actually communicated. Because we don't. We don't communicate. We don't listen. The first thing we want to do is find a way to find an answer instead of actually understanding what the other person is saying. And the people who have worked so hard to get me elected deserve this board's respect, even if you don't respect them because they deserve it. They are community members and they are not happy with what this board has done to their school district. They have watched you tear it down over and over and over, one small policy at a time. I remember last year when you told me you loathed me, Francesa. Has your opinion changed much since?
So, communication is something that we all need to work on, right? That is something that is very difficult to really have implemented in your district, in your classroom, with a team. And working as a team of eight can be very difficult.
She is staring at me. What is respectful? Is sexual harassment in the board meetings, is that respectful? Is sexual harassment in the board?
It was mostly just trying to create a- Let's take a, a moment. Let's take a short recess. So, we can take a short recess and-
What is this board trying to accomplish?
Move our seats if we need to.
It was mostly, I wanted you to be comfortable, Francesa.
Yeah. No, no, I just want, but we're taking a short break. Take a short, short break.
Did everybody share, I'm sorry, is PowerPoint back up? No problem. Did everybody answer question number one? Okay, so now get your pens out because we're going to question number two.
Can I just say ditto?
How do you want to be treated by each other? How do you want to be treated by each other?
That was it? I want to be listened to?
Okay, so people always say it's the same as number one, but it's not. And I hear this. Well, it's same thing as a leader. There are some different components, right? It really is, oh, yes, what is? How do you want to be treated by each other? So going from the leader, who's your president, to all the other board members. How do you want to be treated by all the other board members? So you can dive a little deeper. And when you're ready, put your pen down, put your pencil down.
I'll go.
Okay?
All right.
Wait, we're still waiting. We're still waiting for two more. Okay. I know you have to leave at some point. Okay. Go Trish.
So we had a trustee come in and visit us and said, I'm going to love them, and then walked out. And I think that helps me identify what I said I want from a leader and what I want from everybody else is, you're really not part of a team and you really don't love your team if you're not willing to share what is your vision and really share what that is that you want to go for as a goal and include others to join you in the journey. And so same thing I said as the learning, as the leader, I want to know what your vision is and it's nice when you're invited to be a part of that. And I want people to listen to me and mean it.
Okay, I'll take that.
I'm jumping in. I want to be treated fairly, give me the benefit of the doubt, and trusted.
Trusted, that's a pretty big word. Trusted and fairly.
I'll go next. Want to be treated by each other with kindness. Be nice to one another. Want everyone to value each other. Support and included. Be included. And a lot of that, when I wrote included, it was really connected to what you said and Trish, and you said it perfectly. It's shared, included in this vision of us all creating together, right? And just making sure that we're all included in this space. And like Trish said, it's hard, you know, Trish, I thought she was the best president for a long, long time and I was really intimidated to step into this role. And like I said, I'm struggling as a president because we don't have a safe space here as I think, you know, we've seen, there's a lot of people that don't feel safe. And I don't know how to be, how to be a good board member and a good leader when I can't create that safe space for everyone in this environment, in this room, you know, when you literally do not feel safe for your, not even just being safe to share your ideas, but not feeling safe physically to serve your elected position. I don't know how to, I don't know how to fix that. I don't know how to fix that.
Well, that is a huge responsibility that you're putting upon yourself. You are president. What is within your control and what is outside your control? When you put that weight on your shoulders, that's huge. We, as presidents that have served and as president that you are, you can't control everything. You can't fix everything and you have to understand that and not kick yourself for that. Some things are out of your control. So what can you control? You can control yourself and that is it. You can control how you react and that is it. You cannot control anybody else. And while you want to create and cultivate this safe space for everybody, that's something that everybody is going to have to add to and do together, working together to do that, not just you. So know that you don't need to carry that weight. Who's next?
Okay. So I did say encouragement. I mean, it's tough. Things are tough and I sometimes have a very high bar that I set for myself and so I just, sometimes I just need encouragement to keep going. And also when speaking or when participating, just active listening is something that I think is helpful.
Encouragement is huge, right? It's like just being reflective of that why. And so that's why I told you again, bringing that artifact to talk about what you are as a person. I know that I coach board officers and board members everywhere and I tell them sometimes, just keep that one thing on, right here in front of your, on your dais that reminds you of what you should focus on and encourages you to continue that fight sometimes, those challenges, because there are challenges that we face. And sometimes it's, I know I would have something right on my dais as president. I had it right there, this little trinket that I would look at. Because sometimes as president, you want to be able to control everything and sometimes you couldn't. And I would look at that and I'm like, okay, I know I'm still doing what I need to do. I know that I'm here for kids and that's what it's about, right? But you're right, sometimes you need to reflect and have those encouraging words. Who is next?
Give me space to be me and then respect. We all have one voice, one vote. Regardless of your position on the board, you are the same as every other trustee. So I don't care if you're president, I don't care if you're vice president or secretary, you are still a trustee on this board.
You know, that one always comes up and I'm going to address it in one of these other questions. Everybody has the same value, right? President doesn't have 10 more votes than you. Board officers don't have five extra votes. So it's good to understand that everybody has that one vote, right? Who's next?
I'll go. Go ahead.
One of the best things to me about this board is that everybody has different things that they're good at. Everybody has different knowledge bases that they have. And I just want to make sure that all of those are appreciated and acknowledged that, you know, if I'm trying to talk about something that I might not have as much knowledge on, I hope that somebody else will come in and help me formulate my opinion and get the rest of the facts.
Because everybody has something to contribute. Everybody has value and you will only know that if you're at the table. Okay?
I want to be challenged, but in a kind and firm but productive way by other people.
Challenge, but in a firm, productive way. That's really, that's really important. Did we get everybody with question number two? Okay, very good. Let's move on to question number three. How do you think the leader wants to be treated by you? Now this is where people say, well, what do you mean? The leader's not more important? Why, why are you asking that? Well, a president might not have more votes. How many of you have been president here? So two, three. A president might not have extra votes, but you know what? Being president is a huge responsibility. If you want to be a mediocre president, not so much. But if you want to be an awesome president and lead your board to be that cohesive, high functioning, it is a lot of work. It's very strategic on the things you can control. It's very strategic. It is very, you have to know your team. You need to know how that agenda will flow better. You need to know all those kinds of things. So it is important to think for a moment, how does the leader want to be treated by you? And just put your pens down when you're ready. Okay, we'll take another minute. How do you think the leader wants to be treated by you? Okay, who wants to start us off?
I'll say that in a way, the leader wants to be like understood, but also to realize, I think it's important for you to realize the leader has a different view than you do because they're building cohesion or they're, whoever the president is, building cohesion across the board while also not doing a daisy chain. It is relationship, relationship, relationship. And so they're seeing all these different things and they're having to figure out like how to do this well and help us all walk together when we can't really discuss big things until we get into a meeting. And that is, that is a lot to try to balance. And so I think sometimes myself, I felt when I was president too, other people were frustrated, like, why can't you just do this? Well, because if I do this, then this happens and then this happens and that's why I'm trying to do it this way. But if I explain it to you all, well, I don't even know how to explain this all because some of this is intuition. I'm not going to go ask these questions. So it's just, so I think the leader, if you give that leader grace to know that you're going to tell them, here's my issue, but I also respect the fact that you're dealing with other issues as you're building this cohesive board.
Yes. That's a lot, that's a lot of things you're juggling as president, right? There's so many things that you need to take into account. I mean, just thinking about the agenda, what agenda items should go first? Because I know this one is going to be very explosive. Should we have three explosive items or just one? Where should we let it flow? Well, students are here, we don't want them to see that. Now I need to move this here. Or kids need to go to bed, so I'm going to move this topic. Well, you know she's going to ask you about the environmental impact, so you better, you know. So knowing all of those things and trying to bring your team together, right? Within your control. Okay, next.
I said wants to be listened to and respected, but when I say respected, I mean respected of the position that they're in. So sort of to piggyback off what Trish said, like there's more on their shoulders than just a board member. But at the same time, want to be treated like one of the team. I don't want them to feel isolated. Like I wouldn't want the president to feel isolated, like they're this standalone person and we're all together. We want to make sure that they're feel included. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I have that second point. Treat her like we treat each other. So not necessarily any different, but at the same time, she mentioned being a new president and coming from a longtime president, it's kind of, it feels enormous. And so I did indicate here, provide encouragements and give feedback.
Yes, because sometimes when you're navigating and you did presidency during the pandemic? Yes, so that was fun, right? Those Zoom meetings and then after and measuring out and yeah, that was all kinds of strategy that we had to use in order to navigate through that, right? And giving that president some grace when they forget something or they do something, it's like, oh, they didn't, you didn't do that or what? You know, it's like, oh, okay, I was dealing with all this safety and security stuff and all these other things, so.
And we had a new superintendent. So he had, he come in August 2019 and then COVID hit. And it was like we were literally rebuilding all this education system over again, all these different parts. How's learning, learning's going to go online? And then we had our strategic plan and we had a lot of work. I mean, we've turned through so much. So we're now getting to the sweet spot, right? Yeah. Right?
Well, this might be sweeter than it has been in a minute.
Right. I said with grace because you don't, as the leader, whoever it is, you don't have all the answers and you're trying to juggle all the different pieces that you know, right? Of why did you do it in that order? Why did you do this? But you knew this other piece and you knew this other piece and so with grace and then also with trust and that, you know, that you're listening and you're doing the best to manage the pieces.
And it goes back to knowing their intent, right? Her intent as a leader is good or positive. She has noble intentions. So going back with that grace with that, I know, you know, she dropped this ball, but it's because, you know, and so on, right?
I said no surprises, to communicate and plan ahead of time and then clear as kind.
Ooh, nobody wants to be blindsided? Not at all. No surprises. Who's next?
I'll go respect her time because we're all busy. We all have outside lives. We have families and we also have our personal life, some of us do. And so I think it's important because there's times where I've caught myself between these two, like using them as a sounding board and they are not necessarily that sound, they shouldn't be that sounding board. And so I've learned to be better about that. And then the other thing is, especially with Gloria, Trish as well, but right now with Gloria being our president, she wants me to be truthful when I'm not okay with something because she knows when I'm not okay with something. And she'll be like, I need you to tell me. And sometimes I know, again, going back to being who I am, I'm Anna, sometimes when I say something, it comes off pretty out there, but it's coming from a good place, but it's, you know, I can respect. But it's, you know, I, I can respect that I have that safe space with our current president because I can't go to her when I'm not okay about something. And she gives me that space to talk it out. And it's nice to be able to have that, not a sounding board, but just a space to go and be like, hey, I don't really like how you're doing this, can we talk about this? So.
And knowing your intent is you want things to be better, right? Not because, oh, well, you, I'd probably be a better president here, you know, kind of thing. It's just your intent is to improve things. And I always had to remind the president that came after me, I'm like, you do it your way, you don't have to do it my way. You know, these are some things that I learned from here and that I changed it when I became president. Every president has to change it to meet their style as well, right?
Um, the first one that I said was to be treated with confidence. Because where we do vote in our leaders and we make that decision, or hire leaders, either way, um, I think it makes it more difficult for them to do their job if the people around them don't have faith in them that they can do their job.
Being confident in their ability to lead your team of eight. Is that everybody? Okay. Next question, are you ready for number four? How do we want to treat each other when there is conflict? I'm going to give you a few minutes to think about that one. How do we want to treat each other when there is conflict? And that's what everybody asks, what conflict? External conflict or internal conflict? What kind of conflict are you talking about? You write about what, what you would like. And I do want you to be really reflective in this piece and maybe think a minute more or so about that response. Okay, who would like to start us off?
I'll go first. For external conflicts, I really like it when we keep each other, no, I just, she just mentioned external and internal. So I separated it in my head because I think external conflicts affect us differently than internal conflicts. And so if it's an external conflict, I like it when our board is kept in the loop. More information is better. Even if it seems minute, I think that it's better when we hear it from our administration, from each other of what's going on than it is to hear it from the outside. That makes sense. And then for internal conflict, I think keeping confidential conversations, exactly that. Confidential discussions need to stay confidential. I think that's really, really important, that closed stays enclosed.
Okay.
I combined mine for both external and internal. And I said the first of which.
You don't have to change it, you don't have to change it. It's what you want.
But it, but it changes the, I think, it does change the, I, I'm perceiving it.
Yeah. My priority is that people are treated safely. Conflict shouldn't require people to need escorts to their cars. I would like conflict to be handled honestly. If you're not discussing what actually is the problem and what actually happened, you're not going to go anywhere. And you're going to spend more time going in circles than anything else. And I said that the best interest of this district and the people in it need to be prioritized over pandering and theatrics. It's really easy to get caught up in what other people are going to think or what other people want you to say, and that's not the point of being in this chair.
It's very easy to be caught up in that. I know when I was president during the pandemic, it was really important for our board to remain united, right? No matter what our opinion was, it was very important for us to support our district moving forward. And reading our social contract at the beginning of each meeting really helped us focus on when there is conflict, we're not going to throw each other under the bus. We are going to stay unified and work through it together. Because we can get a lot further together than, oh, well, she voted that way, or, oh, she thinks that way, you know, and causing that division.
Um, okay, they, they ended up being the same internal and external. Okay. Um, try to understand why they feel the way they do. Because again, we all have emotions and we're all, you know, get very passionate about things. So at least for me, I try to break it down and try to imagine myself what it's like because I've been that really angry person with trying to get resolution of something. Listen, then discuss your whole thing, listen to what they have to say and then comment. Give grace because what they may feel passionate about may not what I feel passionate about, but it's clear is something that they feel very passionate about, that they're willing to come and talk at a board meeting or, you know, call us out or call us on an email or something. And I think the big thing though, in all of this for me, is safe space. Like I want to be able to, if there's a conflict between Shawde and I, I want to be able to go to her and be like, you know what? I don't like what you did on that committee and I'm going to tell you why I didn't like it. And like she's already giving me that look. But no. I know that I can go to my board members if I have a concern or a conflict and they're going to hear me out and we're going to try to find a resolution to figure out what can we get to the common core, common good, so. Safe space, so.
Yes. Okay?
I said calmly, because I think we have to keep our emotions under check honestly. And then stay until it's resolved because I tend to flight rather than fight. Because I know once I get to flight, then I get really prickly and it gets, it's not pretty, so.
Very natural, right? That flight, freeze, um, fight.
So I have that we should have an open mind when speaking and listening. And if the, if things get too heated, then we might just need to take a break.
Yes. Okay, who else?
Um, I said with honesty. Just, I think that clear is kind. And if you're not honest, then you have like all these little passive aggressive things that just build and build so, and fester. And so being honest, but I think in order to be able to do that, you also have to trust one another. And in order for that, you have to feel like you're in a safe space to be able to do that. So I think they, they kind of all lean on each other a lot, right? I mean, to be honest, you have to feel like I'm in a safe space to tell you. Like if we, I don't like how you responded to something, I have to feel that, hey, I can, I can be honest with you and it's going to be a safe conversation. And I can trust that, that we can have this relationship to talk about that. So I feel that all three of them kind of lean on each other.
And that's what it goes back to is trust. You have to have that foundation of trust in order to have that safe space. In order to talk honestly about conflict. Who else?
Um, I had, uh, don't drop and run. Sometimes it's easier to just say what it is and then be done. And I'm one of those people that want to talk through things. I really, I need to gnaw on it a bit and I need to talk it out. So then I also said, I also realized there are some people who aren't that way, and so there's going to be space. So sometimes people will need space and sometimes there are going to be people who want to talk it out. And so, um, you know, I try to look at it from both those ways of what would I need or what would somebody else need? And so it does depend on the situation.
And you know, one of the things that we do, yes.
I know this, I need space, give me a day.
Yeah.
And Trish, and I know that Trish is like, no, let's, let's meet right now and let's talk it out. And I'm like, and Anna's the same way. She's like, let's go right now. And I'm like, I think we're both really passionate and I needed, I need, I need space. And so I think it is, but at the same time, I know, don't take too long Gloria, because I know that Anna and Trish, I know that they're over there like, come on Gloria, I gave you the day, you know? And so I think it is that balance of knowing what you need and knowing what the other person needs as well, right?
And articulating that, right? Saying, you, I know that you need this or I, I need space right now. I'm not going to be very productive in my conversation, I'm going to be too emotional, I'm going to be too, you know, whatever the case may be, I need space. And that's one of the things that we do in board officers, is do a team inventory so we can really identify those personalities because not everybody needs the same thing, right?
I have to say one thing I wanted to just put it out there is that, you know, what I appreciate from, from this team is that we've all shared enough about our, our personal lives to get to know each other so that we can have these conversations. When you don't know some, when you don't know anything about anybody because they refuse to share, it makes it really hard to get to know that person and bring them into the conversation. So when, when you don't have that information, that background, that where are you coming from, what is your goals, why? What is your why? And when we don't know that, it makes it really hard to bring someone into the conversation. So that makes it really difficult. So I appreciate everybody here sharing, you know, their, their artifact today, the things we've done in the past that you weren't even aware of, is that, you know, we've, we've shared enough about each other's lives that we know each other and we, we want to work together. And so that makes a team.
It makes you human, seeing somebody on a different level. They're not just that board member sitting on the dais, but they're human as well, humanizes them. Yet, that's everybody? Okay, did anybody want to add anything? Okay, so those are the four questions that we like to talk about. And now Anna had a great question, like what happens when people don't do it, right? Well, in order for it to work is we need to make sure that a social contract is utilized. Again, just having it in writing and putting it away and not seeing it again or not talking about it or not bringing it up in conversation or anything, it's not that living, breathing document that you can really make part of your team, right? So making it accessible is important for your community. Like I told you, put it on your website, this is our social contract. This is something that we adopt, we take action, having it in your boardroom. This is our social contract. I know as board president, I would have to say, I would pick up my social contract that was in our packet as well and that we had in our dais, and I would say, nothing. I would just pick it up when I saw a board member going off the rails, like, here, here's a social contract. Just picking it up.
Can, can I ask a question though?
Yes.
Because you, you're talking a lot about social contract and we do have a social contract in the board operating procedures.
Yes.
But I also think our core beliefs that we worked on, to me, I hear that a lot in my head. So when you're saying social contract, I'm thinking the core beliefs are really like, look, I get how we're going to treat each other, but core beliefs are like the why, right? And we're talking about, we're going to develop and maintain relationships with everybody because it's important to kids, right? And so, yeah, that's.
But they do differ, right?
They do differ. I, I am curious about that. Like as we continue these conversations, I'm looking for the overlap and the separation because I'm seeing some overlap, but I'm also seeing some separation.
And overlap is good, to have that overlap. But again, we don't often have time or space to really articulate our expectations of each other and how we're going to work as a team. You have to work very closely as a team of eight to get things done for the betterment of our students, our district, our global society, right? That's a huge responsibility. But first, we got to learn how to work together, just like in a classroom with our kids. They set up class norms, what their expectations are, their class rules. These are the rules for your team to work effectively and efficiently, right? And even as adults, we sometimes need that. I know we've implemented social contracts in all our departments. So our transportation department has a social contract. We have it in our classrooms, our classrooms have a social contract. Again, it's their norms or their rules of how to act and how to treat each other, right? So that's kind of like where the big difference is. Because core beliefs, yeah, we believe all students will succeed, we believe that, you know, we're, so many things that we can list. And, and it's great to have that. This is why we're here, but this is how we need to act in order to get stuff done, to get us there.
So question, what do you do in a situation where not everybody's on the same page with that social contract?
So we talked a little bit, one of the things is collaboration, right? Is making sure that you bring everybody's voice to the table. And that's one of the things that we often talk about. We have, I've worked with many boards doing this and there's some that are real quiet and they don't talk and don't want to share. I'm like just writing on your post-it, you know, because they don't want to say it out loud and I'll read their post-it for them if they choose not to say it out loud. But still being part of that and hearing and listening to what people are saying, even though you're not maybe verbalizing. It's important for everybody to lend their voice in order to really make it effective, right? But there has been times, and I've seen it and I've been through it, where you had one or two people that weren't really following it. And that's a conversation we had to have. And that's where you have that accountability from your community, accountability from each other. And I, I mean, as president, I had to have that hard conversation. And if you've been to my Board Officer Academy, I talk about going in tiers, right? You start light with like, you know, a feather approach and then it increases. So you start light where, you know, you might ignore it when it's happening at a board meeting, like they're violating the social contract. You ignore it the first time and you go have that conversation offline. Then it, then it keeps happening, then, okay, what do I need to do? Okay, so now I'm going to say, stop, but you got to remain calm. You got to remain calm. Stop. You know, and something as simple as, like I said, I showed the social contract to that board member and made eye contact and was like, and he's like, ooh.
I think the biggest challenge that we face with, with that piece is, you know, we talked about, we can have different opinions, but and we've had board members with different approaches, but I honestly believe we all had the same intent. We had diff, different idea of how to get to the goal, right? But I think in our heart of hearts, we had the same intent and we wanted what was best for Leander ISD. I feel like we're in a different time in public education. We're in a different time in, in our school district where I'm not sure if we're all sitting with the same intent. And that's where all of that starts to fall apart, right? And it's like, how do you do that in these spaces? And I struggle with that. I did Leadership Tazby last year and it was like, And I struggled with that, I did leadership Tazby last year and it was like, you know, we're, we're a team of eight. We have to be a team of eight. And I would like, want to bonk myself on the table and it's like, I don't, I don't think, it's not just a, I have a different approach to get to this. It's a, I don't think you have a very good school district and I don't care about your school district. Versus like, I want to do everything I can to make the school district the best possible. And so, how can you, how can you achieve that? If we're not all willing, like how do we do it when we're at those crossroads?
And the reality is, it is a different world. And the reality is, it's not always going to work with everybody. And you're going to have to understand, you keep moving forward in spite of. Keep moving forward, that's irrelevant, we're, that's our goal, we're going to get to our goal. And sometimes at the end of the day, that's what has to happen in order to continue moving forward and not bang your head against the wall, right? So, um, you collaborate with the folks, the team that wants to be there. Um, so again, going back.
So you talked about accountability with the community, right? If you have an individual or individuals, how many, that are not following their social contract, refusing to go by it, you know? What does that accountability in that community look like? Cause you know, you've, you've, you addressed one situation and you go from there. Like what does that look like? What does that look, what is, what does that look like to you from your experience? That accountability piece in the community and how does that translate to the board?
So again, that goes back to the situation where it's like, okay, you're not following that social con- again, you do offline, all that stuff. Next step, okay, you're not following the social contract and then you stop, have a conversation. There was a time where I actually had to do it at a meeting and I had to say, absolutely not. You will stop, that is not appropriate, you're out of order and you are violating the social contract. That's not okay. We're going to take a recess, call for a recess. That your behavior was inappropriate, it will not be tolerated, it's not okay. But you have to understand that sometimes you ha- you have to make, as a president, you have to make that quick decision of what am I going to allow to escalate by my response? Is it worth it? Or what approach am I going to take? So you have to be quick on your feet and one thing that I, I'll sh- I'll, so I'll share some tips offline. But, um, um, you have to be quick on your feet in order to make some very strategic decisions to move your board and your district forward. Okay, so this is an example of a social contract. So I write yours in your board operating procedures, which was a little bit different. It should be more concise and this is an example. So our social contract reads, the board will serve as district ambassadors. Again, what is our job? We're here for the students of Leander, right? So we serve as district ambassadors. We assume positive and noble intentions. So when I'm going, and I'm like, Anna, you know, your opinion is so different than mine, but you know what? I still assume she's coming from a noble intent. She's not coming to tear down our district or tear down our programs or hurt our kids. She has noble intentions and I'm going into it assuming positive and noble intentions until you prove me differently, right? Until you prove me differently. But as, then you go back to that part of, okay, well, we all need to keep moving forward together and that's going to be irrelevant in spite. That's right. And sometimes that, I've experienced it, sometimes it has to happen. Um, collabora- and I, we can have that chat later. But collaborate as a team and respect the body corporate. That is something that we made sure to put in there because of that pool experience. We wanted to make sure that things like that, even though it's in our board operating procedures, respect the body corporate, we made sure to put in our social contract, right? And really commit and double down to it. Uh, the board will promote discussion and value each other's perspectives. Now I want to talk about this for a second because before, we, and we review it every year and we change it. Before it said something to the effect of promote discussion and respect each other. And I said, we need to take that out, absolutely not. Um, because I don't need to respect you and I might not even like you. But I am going to value your perspective. I am going to listen and be open to hearing your perspective because I had to come into this premise of assuming positive and noble intentions, right? But doesn't mean I'm going to respect you. Because respect, um, for most people is earned, right? Um, people feel differently about it, but I was like, nope, I can't resp- you can't tell me who to respect, I'm not going to do it. Um, so the board will be professional and that all goes back to being that ambassador, right? Having that professional decorum. We are the face of the district as well as board members. And if you are behaving badly or if you're acting inappropriately, it really is disheartening for our community, for our students, for our staff, to see somebody in that position leading their district acting like that. So that was important for us to put, be professional. We left it in there even though we didn't need it anymore because we had like an amazing team of eight. But we left it in there.
Can we look at ours? So since we've not kind of gone over that and that's fresh in our mind. I think the first one might be something that we all struggle with is do your homework. Oh no, there we go.
That's a lot of words.
We can always wordsmith.
So usually what happens is.
Expectation of preparedness.
With these answers, once you get these answers, then you come up with those statements, right? And you want to keep it four to five statements, you want to keep them short and concise. You don't want them to be too wordy because that's something you can put in your board operating procedures just as you're in your board operating procedures under behavior and not your social contract. Your social contract, just like your mission and vision that are short, they shouldn't be paragraphs. It should be very concise, right?
Well, the reason I'm asking is, um, there's been discussion, and I won't go deep in discussion because I'm posted for all of that, but about ethics in our policy. And one of the things we pulled from was this list. This list parallels actually a lot of ethic, uh, ethical principles for school board trustee.
Well, we have ethical standards that we have to follow and so we incorporate, we put that on the first page of our board operating procedures. It's our title page and then the ethical standards that are required by the state.
My, yeah, and, and, and it does, my question is, is we're, we're trying to, because we did this at our last team of eight where we did this exact same question and this is kind of where we developed. Um, as a board, I'm curious now when you're looking at this, because we went through the same practice last time.
Yes, we talked about it.
Where, what do you see now? What is our next step as a board?
I honestly think we need to redo it because we were in a different position we were a year ago than where we are today.
And it's good to review every year and tweak it, uh, tweak it. So you might want to put in your board operating procedures, if you don't have it already, put that one pager on ethical standards, right? Um, if you don't have it, put it in there and that will cover, a lot of this stuff you're saying here is like, you're right. It's part of the ethical standards. So just capture it through that for your social contract, make it shorter, more concise. Because like I said, a lot of boards that I've worked with and we have done this, they now too, read it at their board meeting. So on the agenda, it has our social contract, you do the pledge, you do the Texas, and then you say those short four things. And it helped tremendously when we did have conflict, when we did have things going on in the community, to take a moment and just say that. We assume positive and noble intentions. You know, we are district ambassadors and yours would not be the same as ours, but I'm just giving you an example of that.
So I have a question, can I ask the board? Is that something y'all have an appetite to do? So we have those board norms and we talk, we don't talk about it, but just like what she's saying? Are y'all, what do y'all think about that?
Well, yeah, I guess what I want to know is as a board, do we think that the time is needed to kind of, because it takes time to churn through that? And so we can consolidate operating procedures to kind of pull through some of those because there's operating procedures and norms, ethics.
I can't imagine it would be all of this, I'm thinking four or five shorties, kind of like what Hayes has got.
And get rid of this.
No, not necessarily get rid of that. I think, I, I think that stays. I think social contract is different than this. I see, I'm seeing this different.
Apologies. I feel like it's different, it's slightly different.
It is different, but this is what came out of your conversation before, but you can leave it in. You can also include your ethical, yes, you did this before.
I think this, I'd want to stay, but I think we could create.
A shorty.
A shorty, and, because I do think we've learned a lot together as a board. And we know, like I look at this and I see one thing that to me is glaringly missing, especially when I see, see the one that you, the example you showed. And, and I'm like, hey, you know, we talk about the will of the board. And as, you know, as a body corporate, right? You know, you talk about the swimming pool and stuff and, right? We'll forever, uh, talk about that example here too now. But I think, um, we, we have over the year of like, of bonds, of, of different things, right? If, even if I don't vote on it and the board does, I'm, I need to support, like I'm going to move forward. I'm not going to.
Exactly.
I'm not going to try to get a second and put it on the agenda next week, right? But we're going to move forward because this is the, you know, I'm going to support the will of the board.
What's interesting is that is in our board operating procedures. It's just not in, in this list. And so I almost wonder if maybe we need to clean this because I just don't know if we need to put more on more. Maybe we find out, is, are we already saying this somewhere else? Because sometimes it seems like we sometimes do say things a couple of times. And is there, is there a way to, to put that in a easy, easily findable place? Um, we have in there that trustees shouldn't be using their position to, um, gain something um, that would fall under your ethics. Um, so I do, I feel like, I feel like, I feel like this conversation that we did last time, like I'm seeing them. Think, how does this impact your district? That was huge for us, uh, last team of eight when we talked about it. And then when we talked about how to resolve conflict, we were definitely dealing with, okay, how are we going to resolve conflict? And our board operating procedures built out now, some of those conflict steps that we can, can do. So I almost wonder, is there a way where we can clean this up? Do we have to keep this or can we clean this up?
You can always modify your board operating procedures. So if you want to keep that in your board operating procedures, because it's not labeled social contract anywhere. So you can clean that up, also add your ethical standards in there. Um, that's something that we make sure to, when we onboard, we tell people, these are the ethical standards that we should be following. Um, and then you can clean that up to keep in your board operating procedures. Your social contract can, is separate. Uh, we do have our, uh, our social contract listed in our board operating procedures as well, but it's labeled. This is the social contract, this is the page number, and then we read it and it's on our agenda every meeting. It's written there, um, for us because it's, again, it's one thing, you create it and then you don't do anything with it. And you never look at your board operating procedures unless something happens. Um, so something, a quick glance, if you will.
Yes, and I, I think that's where, you know, Trish and I got together and did these board ops and I remember the line of thinking with this, but like, a lot has changed. There's a, a lot more conversations and emotions right now, right? And I think also, we have a lot of, um, community members asking, where's that accountability piece? How do we know you're doing, you know, where's that, how do we hold you to it? And I think for me, when I look at this, the, nobody's going to read this. And so if we have something, four or five sentences where we can, like our core beliefs, we can fall back to and I'm really a big fan of this calling you out in a board meeting. But I, I think it just, it gives the community one, those four to five sentences to understand what they're holding us, but also the board is holding each other accountable. And it, like you said, you, precise, to the point, get in and get out.
Yes.
One thing that I liked from the governance core is, um, how. We're all elected and we're elected to serve the entire district. Um, and once we're elected, elections are over. It's about what do we do for the benefit of all students, all teachers, the entire community? And it's trying to capture that piece to remember or to remind people, because it is in the governance core. It's a little section there, but kind of bubbling that up into a discussion like, um, or into a document like that. So it's kind of like at our forefront.
I love it. I have a whole thing on the governance core, a whole, like several activities to do on that. But, uh, you're right, you know, the election's over. You represent the best for the district, not pander to any one group. Uh, whether people voted for you or not, you are representing everybody. Even if you're a single member district, we are trustees, not representatives. Huge difference. And people don't quite understand that difference between a representative and a trustee. Okay, so that's an example of a social contract. So if you like, at the end of all this, I will put something together for you all. Give it to you, give it back to you all and then you modify, edit how you want, okay? Okay.
Will you take into consideration the one we did have? You'll look at that one? You're going to give us something or are you just going to take a scratch from here?
Okay. Okay, so when we are all going in the same direction, what happens? We have success. And again, lived it, breathed it, um, it is so true. And even though you are a high performing district, you know, those little pebbles that you run into can make you deviate from that success. Okay, do y'all want to take a break or keep going? Okay, let's go. We're going to do board self-assessment. Okay, so, oh my goodness, I'm running out of time. Okay, board self-assessment. We are going to look at it, you took it, here you go. Um, I had seven responses. So we are going to look at actionable items and informational items. So are we ready to do that? Okay. Cindy, I am going to ask you to help me real quick. If you can pull these down and I'm going to, and put the sticky chart paper so I can write on that, that'll be great. Do y'all need a little break? Okay. We have actionable and informational. So I want you to look at, oh yes. See, I have your, the social contract you worked on last time, I have all of that. And I printed your taper because I needed to know all your scores, I needed to know everything about you. Um, so I don't need this right now. But as you can see, we had seven responses on there. But I want you to look at my screen, right? And I know it's small, but I want you to turn to that page, which is page three. Page three. So what I'm going to do on page three, that's going to be the team development phase one review, is what we're going to look at. The first two pages is a summary that we're going to go back to in a little while. But let's go to page three. And what I want to look at is things that you rated super high and things that might need some attention, right? So I used red for things that really need attention, green for something, some things that might need to be on your radar. And then you will have a star for things that were very high. So the first one that should be on your radar is number 16. Number 16 says, team members are concerned with personal acceptance of the team. So that's something to put on your radar. You had, uh, 43% that agreed with that. You had forty-three percent that agreed with that. So everybody reads that differently. So I just kind of want to just bring it to your attention. Do with it what you will on that one, right? Because it just depends on how you translated that. Now, one thing that was really good was number seventeen. And it says, "We haven't discussed our goals very much in this team." And look at those numbers, fifty, fifty-seven percent strongly disagreed and forty-three percent disagreed. So that is fantastic. You are talking about your goals, you know your goals, you are on board with that. Number nineteen, "There is very little conflict expressed in this team." So that one is something I want to bring to your attention. Um, it's green, but still bring it to your attention. You have fifty-seven percent that disagreed with that statement. Forty-three percent agreed with that statement, that there was little conflict. Okay, so want to bring that, does anybody want to have any conversation about those green ones?
When I was filling this out, I was struggling with some of those.
Yes.
Because, um, when it was asking about the team, does the team do this well? I didn't, um, I felt like as a whole.
Overall.
Overall, the team did do things well. And so I, I was filling it out at first and, and I was like, nope, nope, nope. And then I said, wait a second. Like, I, I need to, I need to think about how do we proceed in spite of? How do I move forward? So I went back and started over and said, as, as a team, the majority of the team, how do we do this? And, and went back and, and kind of did it that way.
Sure.
Because otherwise, I felt like then I wasn't really being fair to the team. So, uh, but it took me a, like, I, I wasn't sure if that was the right thing to do. I struggled with that.
I'm gonna be honest, I actually answered with that. And I was thinking of the whole team of eight. And I rated it that way and I noticed some of my answers were negative. I'm gonna be honest. But I know at the end of the day, the majority of the board, we do get work done and we do respect each other. And I think, I wish, I wanted to look at it in that one to seven, I shouldn't say that, I wanted to look at that in that space of board members who are doing the work and are showing up and putting in the effort. But I also know we're a team of eight. And that's how we're viewed in our community. And so it was hard for me to really put some of these answers, because I know majority of us are doing the work. But at the end of the day, again, we are a team of eight.
So we are on page four now. So one thing you did real, well, I told you the, one you did really well, we'll have a star by it. So we're on page four, on phase two of your team development phase, right? So let's look at that. So one thing, green is, I'm calling to your attention. Red means we're gonna address it. And a star means that you're doing it very well. So number twelve, "Team members seem to have very different views about how things should be done in this group." So that's something to look at. It can be a positive or it can be a negative, right? It's okay to have, and Gloria, you kept talking about this, how we have different ways to get there. And at the end of the day, he's the how, how to get there, right? We're just setting that end goal. So it's okay that there's different ways to think about things? That's okay. So that can, I just want to bring it to your attention. It can be positive or negative, depending on how you read it. Now, number thirteen, "Disagreement about goals and tasks emerges in this team." So that's the one that I want to look at, it's red. So I want to talk about number thirteen. I'm gonna go right here. I want you to take a moment to think about, how can we change that? How can we change that? Disagreement about goals and tasks emerges in this team.
Our social contract.
What else?
I, I think it takes dialogue. We have to talk about these things out.
So dialogue. Listening.
A willingness to listen, on my mic.
Giving safe space in the listening.
And don't judge my spelling. But when you talk about dialogue, go back to what we should be doing, right? Um, when we talk about campus leadership team, district leadership team, um, site-based decision-making, right? And having that buy-in. You want folks to really, you know, dive into those goals and tasks, making sure that we're listening and trying to come to some agreement. And having buy-in from everybody at the table, right? Doesn't mean that you're gonna agree one hundred percent, but what can I live with? Okay? So now on the next page, page five, we have team development phase three. And we're going to look at number seven, it was awesome. "This team is able to form subgroups or subcommittees to work on specific tasks." So that's something you're doing really well, right? How awesome is that? So that's a strength to, that you can utilize. You can have an ad hoc committee to look at your board operating procedures and fix that wording on that other stuff, you know? So there you go. And I'll, I'll give you a minute to look at it. I know I'm going fast, because I know we're running out of time. What time is it? Six thirty-two. I know, I'm, I'm like, I'm nervous about the time now. Um, so look at those on every page that we're going through. I'm sorry, I rushed.
I was curious on number five. Um, I really was. "This team is spend, spending its time planning how it will get its work done." And I think that might go back to the one about disagree of like, how we're doing, like, maybe, I didn't think we were supposed to take like, necessarily planning time at each meeting. I would look at this and I'd be like, okay, the agenda planning calendar. All right, well then that's what we're gonna need to vote on, is the agenda planning calendar. Is that what you thought, or what was that for you, when you put that question there? Yeah, what does that question mean?
Well, I didn't write this assessment, so I might have worded it a little bit differently.
Well, what were you thinking?
Yeah, what was your intent by your question?
Yeah, yeah, I want to know. Because we might all see it a little different and how do I, how do I know? How we, if we're not all on the same page?
That's right. I would have worded it a little bit differently, because it's different when you're a board member and you're looking at it, because you read it differently, right? So I would, I would read it, if I'm taking this, because I have to take this as well with my board, I would read it like, is there planning? Maybe the officers are planning, right? Maybe there's subcommittees that are planning from my board. Are we taking that time to do the work? If we're in the audit committee, are we taking that time to do what we need to in the audit committee? If we're on the, well, we're not on SHAC, but the safety and security, you know? Are we, are we doing it? We don't allow other board members to go. Yes, to, to committee meetings. Oh, that's just a side note. Yeah, we'll talk about it later, yes. Hey, you can remote coach with me anytime. We do not allow it. Okay. Next one is team development, uh, base four review. And this one was amazing. You all did really good on this one. Yes. So number one, "This team acts on its decisions." So forty-three percent agree, fifty-seven, uh, strongly agree. So amazing. Number two, "This team encourages high performance and quality work." Eighty-six percent strongly agree and fourteen percent agreed. Number four, "This team spends time planning how it will solve problems and make decisions." So problem-solving. So of course, you have to take that with a grain of salt, right? I mean, maybe not pre-planning, but you might do some dialoguing during your meeting on how things need to be solved and make decisions based on that. I know we talk, I mean, like, think about budget meetings, right? When you're at budget workshop and you're talking about, what are we gonna prioritize as you go into budget season? You know, how can we solve that problem? We want to take care of our auxiliaries. Well, and you talk it through, let's do a tier approach in our salary increases, you know, planning and trying to problem-solve. Those are big decisions. Or when you're adopting that deficit budget, what are we gonna cut? What are we gonna do? So talking it through and working through that. And then you had, number six, "Team members want to work within this team again in the future." Fifty-seven percent strongly agree. Forty-three percent agree. so it is anonymous, it is anonymous, so we don't know who answered what. So you don't have to divulge who took it or not. Um, so, page seven. Okay, so page seven, um, okay. Actually, I need to go back to this one that I was gonna bring up to you. Hold on. Oh, right here. While I did not highlight it, I wanted to talk about it, mention it real quick. So number eighteen is, "Team members challenge the leader's ideas." Fourteen percent said disagree and eighty-six percent said agree. Well, again, it's how you read it, right? How do you read it? Because most superintendents do want to be challenged and pushed. You mentioned it in what you said earlier. You want to be challenged and have that productive conversation. So it depends on how you were reading it. Because it's not a, it doesn't have to be a negative thing. It can be very positive. I know when we interviewed for honor board, our superintendent said, you know, in all my years of being superintendent, I think at that time it was like fourteen years of being superintendent at that point, he's like, "This is the hardest board I ever worked with. They challenged me, they this and this and this and that." He said, "But it is the best thing." He goes, "I have never been so satisfied and so happy and so excited about my job because my board challenges me to be better and do better and think outside the box and just be a better me for the district." So challenging can be very positive, right? So I wanted to just bring that to your attention. Well, somebody put disagree, so somebody thought of it, could have read it differently.
Who, I'm just kidding, no. Well, I read it like when we were thinking about, you know, when decisions are come to us, right? And the one I started thinking about was the, the five percent pay raise and administration wanted to, and the board was like, no, 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 no. And we pushed back. We challenged our administration and it was a weird situation being as a trustee doing that. But I do appreciate our administration understanding where the board was coming from and giving us grace on that decision.
And I love it, it should be a norm.
Well, and I don't think you should be a rubber-stamp board. I'm gonna ask Gloria why.
Yep.
I might ask her three or four times.
That's right.
I'm still respecting her, she's still an awesome leader. Oh my goodness, great job you, but I'm still gonna ask why. I mean, yeah.
And that's, and that is perfectly okay, right? Remember, it's a recommendation, doesn't mean that we have to take it. You know, it's just a recommendation. Okay, so next page that we are on, uh, let's see. Okay, so this one, "This team has effective conflict management strategies." So I didn't mark it because it was just twenty-nine percent. It was, I just marked in red forty-three percent and above. Um, so, "This team completes tasks in a way all members agree upon." There's twenty-nine percent that disagreed with that.
I think, I think, I'm finding this throughout the evening and I'm gonna noodle on this some more. The, the word conflict is different from aggression. And do we have conflict management strategies? Or do we have strategies to manage hostile aggression? And I don't know, but I'm just, I'm newing on this.
I love that, because that really puts different meaning to it. Because it isn't just conflict. Conflict you can deal with and handle and, and talk through and have dialogue and all of those things we've talked about. Aggression is different.
Well, and a person could be aggressive and not know. There, there, there could be all sorts of things going on in a conflict that, that almost, I almost feel like a conflict assumes there's some type of dialogue going on. Where aggression, there might not even be an awareness component, I don't know.
And I think that conflict means different things to different people, right? When they filled this out, were they thinking aggressive conflict? Or were they thinking dialogue, like, I'm having a constructive conflict where we're having, you know, a back-and-forth discussion about something? And they do mean different things. And so I wonder, just hearing you just say this verbally, I don't know if we, if you and I were responding to that question with the same intent, you know?
Definitely. Or if it's more not personal conflict, but instead, when we have conflict about rezoning, do we have conflict management strategies about that? Yes, of course. Um, do we have conflict about that? Or about the pool? Or, you know, do we know how to have management strategies for that, right?
I also think that with, on number eleven, where it says that the team completes tasks in a way all members agree upon, even if the answer there is no, I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing. I, I don't think that, that everybody is always going to agree. And I don't think that every conflict can be solved in the same way. So maybe if, you know, four people like one way and three people like a different one, you know, the, the majority method would work better for conflict type A or the minority opinion would work better for conflict type B. I don't, the way I read that one, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing.
And again, you have consensus, which means, can you live with it? Doesn't mean I like it, but can I live with that decision? And can we move on, right? So that's another thing to kind of think about.
Uh, I think when we do this next time, we, I'd love for our team not to talk about our responses, but have a shared definition of the question, because then the, the responses mean, right? They can be used and interpreted differently. Because conflict, I think it meant different things to, to different members, right? And so I'm looking at that information and I don't know what, what to make of it because of that. So that's, I think, something that we could do together as a board and just make sure that, like, not talking about our responses, because those are confidential, but just talking about the language of the questions and make sure that we have a shared understanding.
I would love to be able to see if there's even a way to have a shared understanding more answering? Like, if I know what the definition of these things are, then, I don't know if that's possible. Then it would be helpful, because I felt like, oh, I'm on the same page and this is what we all said or thought. Um, because I think it would inform me a little bit more. Um, because to your point, when I'm looking at it, it's like, well, you know, you could have thought this and you thought it was this way. It's, I, I don't know, it's neat to see kind of where did we all land.
So that's why this conversation's important. So that's why this conversation's important. Because this is your baseline, right? This is the first time you do this one, because this is our new one. Um, so next year, you're, hey, we had that discussion. This is what it meant to the group. This is what it meant to the, to the team, right? So that is great. And I know I'm gonna do that with my team before we answer. Before we do ours. Okay? Next page. Look at this. That was amazing. That one was rated very highly, again. So these are some of the things that you did very well. So, "This team believes it can become exceptionally good and successfully accomplish each assignment." "This team believes it can be very effective." "This team expects to be known as a highly performing group." "This team believes that no assignment is too tough." "This team can get a lot done when it works hard." So that was another one that you rated very highly. Okay? Next page. So for number seven was very, uh, rated very highly. "Members of this team are able to discuss problems and tough issues." Seventy-one percent agreed, twenty-nine percent strongly agreed. So you talked about safety a lot today. And this is what you rated it. One of the things to kinda...
I, I think, again, I, as I was doing this, I read, I said, okay, I'm gonna answer this with the majority of the board because I didn't feel like that was fair otherwise to...
And, and I think most people agreed with you on number seven, right? Okay, so number ten is one that I wanna bring to your attention. "It is safe to take a risk on this team."
Which is really interesting, right? When you think about, are we thinking about just this group? Then are we safe with each other to take a risk with each other? And we didn't feel that way.
Well, or is it, is it, it's safe to take a risk? I, I, I think... Yeah.
Yes. So it's just something to bring to your attention and knowing that you all have a shared outlook on this question, right? Knowing how you all, what your intent was behind when you answered it. Okay. So the next one is sharing information. "Team members listen actively to each other." Look at that, you got a gold star on that one, too. "On this team, I share all the relevant information and ideas I have." So again, agree and strongly agree. We're highly rated on here.
But that could be a negative if you have a whole lot of ideas.
Yes. Next one is co-construction. And you also got a gold star on this one. "Team members elaborate on each other's information and ideas." "If something is not clear, we ask each other questions." Information from team members is, I can't even read it, complemented with information from other team members. That sharing is going on. So gold star on that one. Constructive conflict review. So for the first one, it was a gold star. "Team members draw conclusions from the ideas that are discussed in the team." That was one hundred percent agreed with that. Comments on ideas are acted upon. So again, you all talked about valuing your opinions and voices. And it says, comments on ideas are acted upon. Number nine. "Opinions and ideas of team members are verified by asking each other critical questions." And you talked about that. You know, I asked the why, I'm gonna ask several times. You know, not just because I like you, am I gonna be okay with that? I want the data. Show me the data. It's not about emotion. Okay, so then the summary, which you'll find on page one, will show you where you're at. So in regards to team, team development phase, you are like in the, you're highly rated. You're almost a four, right? Uh, which four is the, the N, the highest you can go? So on your team development phase, you are like a three point seven five. Uh, when it comes to team learning behaviors, you're about a three point two five. So that's where it meets. So there's still some room for growth. But there are so many areas that you are solid on and you are strong on and can move forward on, right? So we are required to do a self-assessment annually. And you have fulfilled your requirement. There's one thing that we had to look at, which was number thirteen. So that came up on something actionable that you can do in order to address number thirteen, right? Having that dialogue, listening, creating that safe space, uh, using your social contract to help you through that. Okay, any questions on this self-assessment? What time is it? Okay. Wow, this is so good. And it's, no questions? Okay? Well, we all know that when we work together, we are stronger together and it only benefits our students. And that's what we're about. That's what we should be about, is making sure that student achievement for all is our number one priority. Okay, well, thank you so much for your time. Yay! I'm so excited.
Thank you so much for being here with us, for being patient with us and for being flexible...
Always.
With tonight, and we really appreciate you.
Well, thank you. If you, if you don't have any questions, I'm actually gonna pass out one more thing for you all. It has my phone number. Feel free to contact me. Um, this is, or we are required to also pass out our Framework for School Board Development. And everybody should have that. And it has my card. You can email me any questions. You can contact me. And I do Zoom coaching with any board members. So you can always email and set that up with me, of course. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night, of course.
It is six fifty-three and we're going to adjourn tonight.